So sorry about that.
It's okay. Can't go too far.
He took somebody else's mail. And you're right, you're on the check.
Um, it depends how efficient you want to be. Oh, uh, here's one, I'll wait. We, as they get shorter, we'll show them at the time. Very good. Remember, I mean, it's going to count me in all hours. So I'll just start out with seventeen. For the park, we'll start purchasing. I guess we have a date? I'll send out your mind. Um, I'm looking there. Why didn't it say no? Uh, uh.
Yeah, so it's fine down there.
I have a speed limit. Then kilometers.
Soon as you saw the, I saw the break.
Hey, how's it going, Mary?
Good, buddy. How you doing?
Pretty good.
Okay. You won't, at all?
All right, we're gonna start the conference session for July twentieth, twenty twenty-three.
I can go ahead?
Yep.
Okay, so first up, we have the old Morgan School lease. John, if you could come up, please?
So Mr. Jackson, actually, in the audience here, will be giving us a short presentation just on the objective of the use. So this is the Duff Avenue, former Morgan School. The site is currently not being maximized or optimized in terms of use. My understanding in speaking with Park Board is that it's more of a storage area for boxing equipment. There might be some use going on. It was, previously, this property was identified in twenty twenty-one as a potential disposal candidate. So, looking at the lease, or not lease, looking at the deed, it was conveyed to the city through the Board of Education. There are some covenants that restrict how we can utilize the property. In particular, there's only, we're only allowed to allow public or community uses. No private or for-profit ventures are allowed to occur. And in the event the property were sold, we would have to remit half of the, well, since it's been more than ten years since the initial demolition, we're looking at half of the revenues collected would have to go to the school board. And speaking with Doug Comer with the Park Board, there was a question on if there is a lease agreement, how that would work with the Park Board. That's something I believe our city attorney would have to work out fully with the lease, how monies would be utilized. Additionally, this is just the beginning of a due diligence period to being able to establish what the tenant would be able to, I guess, take on for a lease. And if we're able to come up with a product that allows for a long-term lease situation, to allow for financing improvements, something we can explore. So this is, tonight, it's still kind of loose, but we're hoping to be able to get some guidance, be able to pursue this further and work with the city attorney on actually getting a lease to you as either a resolution or ordinance. So, but I'll turn it over right now to Mr. Jackson, who can provide some general information about the school that he's going to be looking to build at this site.
Actually, before I talk, I'd like to introduce actually the founder of the foundation, Xavier Tree. I'll be the contractor that's backing her up for anything she needs. So this is Amanda Berry.
Hello. All right. So we started something called the Xavier Tree. And what the Xavier Tree is, it's a nonprofit organization that we started in twenty twenty, with the goal to be servants in our community. We started slow with Pastor Peggy over in Broadway at Connecting Point Community Church, where we utilized her church for after-school programming, food drives, tutoring, stuff like that. We've sponsored, they've helped us sponsor free pool parties with help from companies like WB Nano Shield, Jean Papa and Central Van Lines. We continue to run summer work programs and activity programs. After this year's tutoring program, we spoke with parents, speaking on specific needs like tutoring, after-school programs that stimulate mind and access new technology, and a host of requests that would ultimately create confident and skilled adults based on the skills that would be taught and provided to educate, not indoctrinate. So we created a curriculum and syllabus for the Xavier Tree School of Thought. Our initiative program is designed to transcend the ordinary boundaries of transnational education. At its core, the school aims to provide more than just academic knowledge. It is envisioned as a sanctuary of learning that cultivates curiosity, creativity, and critical thinking in its students. Every aspect of the curriculum is crafted to empower young minds and encourage them to reach their fullest potential. The Xavier Tree School of Thought is about fostering an environment that embraces diverse perspectives, encourages questioning, and nurtures open-mindedness. Students will be exposed to cutting-edge technology, opening doors to new opportunities, and preparing them for the future defined by rapidly evolving advancements. By focusing on practical skills and hands-on experience, the curriculum seeks to create confident and skilled adults who can take on challenges of the modern world with resilience and determination. From comprehensive tutoring programs to stimulating after-school activities, the Xavier Tree will offer a complete educational experience that aims to shape well-rounded individuals ready to contribute meaningfully to society. As we present the Xavier Tree School of Thought to the esteemed City Council of Harrison County, we implore you to recognize the undeniable need for such an educational revolution in our community. With the Xavier Tree School of Thought, we have an opportunity to create a generation of forward-thinking, empathetic, and resilient leaders who will shape a brighter future for Harrison County, West Virginia, and beyond.
I think he's done. Any questions? So basically, we started doing a lot of things, as she said. We got with Gray Keith about maybe six months ago, saying that we need a building. We wanted to start with some recreation, because you see most of the kids that we deal with. We have a bunch more, not much local support, but we got a lot of companies from other places. Food Line helps us with a lot of things, so we're trying to do a lot of this ourselves. So Gray Keith told us to look at that building, and we think we can do something with it. So, that's where we at.
Any questions?
So, would you make that the stage classrooms, or would you make the basketball court?
Well, we want to start at, because it's the only opportunity we have. We want to kind of, I do health and fitness, I'm a certified trainer. We have vocational guys who come teach carpentry, so we can kind of split it up. So where the kids can still have some fun, we're gonna use some of that area and build some rooms, some places where they can ask for classes as well. We want to use some of that land outside as well, maybe get a building or two right there as well.
And is this, this is an after-school program?
It's gonna start as an after-school program, recreation. We got some help from some alumni at Fairmont University, they're gonna help us with some of the different things that we're doing. So we want to have it open for some of the kids. Sometimes they call us because they bored, it's crazy. They call you when they bored, right? So, we want to have access, they need access, so.
And there'll be a focus on technology and science?
Oh, yeah, that's my, STEM project.
Pan, going, army?
Listen, if y'all have a copy of the curriculum that we gave, we have a kind of a way to invigorate them so they can use that technology in the future. 3D printing, we working with 3D printing model houses. I don't know if y'all are aware, they printing big homes in Africa and Texas, big homes, 3D models. So if we invigorate them now, they'll be able to use that technology soon.
Would this be seven days a week, or just?
As often as we can. Working with some Apex representatives across the hall. So the more grants, the more money we put in ourselves, the more things we get, the more we are. We, they were, we was told to start with the building first.
I think it's a wonderful idea. So that building now needs a lot of work.
Yes, sir.
There's a rough estimate, about seventy thousand, seven to a hundred thousand to get it back up to code. The last time we looked in, twenty twenty-one, we just quit talking about it. Brought it up to, but I said it, I mean, I wasn't on council yet, but, or well, it was right before I got on council. They talked about it, and then they just quit talking about it. So, I don't know, the number is now, it's probably well over under, everything. So, I mean, what's your plan to?
My plan first is, Mr. Whitman and I talked about a couple of grants that are available now. So we want to start with the most pressing issues, roof, any leaks and that issues. Anything that we can get going as of now. And then I have some guys in DC I deal with, Sheldon Construction, they can come down and aid as much as they can. Mr. Papa, Jean Papa is gonna aid as much as he can, so we gonna get it done, you know?
And so, and your long-term funding be based on grants, or?
Grants, fundraising, community support, and my company and her company as well.
And you're registered as a five oh one through C?
What, what age ranges are, were your school service and?
We take them all, whoever.
From what areas?
We've been dealing with kids from Bridgeport, Morgantown. I mean, we get kids trickling in, they disappear, they come back, depends on what the needs are. So we really don't isolate anyone. Whoever calls us, we got a Facebook page, and we share a lot of different things. So, who knows, people come into town and stay for a week, and they come around and work with some of us, and then they go home, you know? So, just an experience.
Where do you operate, per?
Where do we operate? Really, everywhere. The kids show up on all my work sites that are safe. We go to churches sometimes, we go to parks. This week, we'll be, this weekend, we'll be at the VA. Everybody comes for free with the support of the local park board, because I'm on the municipal building commission. So, we just do what we can.
Do you have a social media page, or any, where's the coverage of this, like?
Xavier Tree, we have stuff all the time, stuff we do in the community. Xavier Tree is on, and Inspired Diamond as well.
On Facebook?
To Facebook, you know, we have a big LinkedIn following as well.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
One thing to continue on that, that building, and I mean, I'm not against this at all, I love this idea. But right now, the boxing clubs is there. It has been active. I mean, it's active right now. So I think, if we were to make a decision on the building, I think we need to help facilitate for help that boxing club still exists, or try to figure out a way for it to continue. Obviously, Tommy Thomas Boxing Club, it's his legacy, it's active, Jerry Thomas, they're all, they want to continue this. They operate in that building, and it was parked, was ran, so I don't, the idea that it's not, it wasn't active, isn't active, is not true. They have several pro fighters that are training out of there. They have fighters that are going to fight in Ohio right now. I mean, there's, it's a good thing for the community, it always has been. Me, myself, I mean, I even went through there. I mean, it's always been free through the community, it's been a great asset. So, I think we need to not just turn our back on the organization that has used that. And so I would like to us to look in ways to keep them, or help them somewhere. Whether it's at the park or wherever we have facility, I mean, something, they don't need much. But they needed a gym or a couple boxing rings. So I just want to turn our back on that Tommy Thomas legacy. If we do that, it's not, we don't really honor his legacy. So I think we need to look for avenues for that as well.
Let us add one question on, you know, where are we at in the process as, with these, with this group working with staff?
So, myself and John, we met three weeks ago, maybe? Maybe, I don't even know that one, I can't say it's much longer than that, because I wasn't here. Just to identify, met with them, see, I didn't know what a stem school was. Find out what they were looking for, see if there was a potential building. He did mention that he had spoken with Gary Heath. I believe he met with John and Brittany today as well. So we've had a couple meetings, but I wanted to bring this to council before we went any further, to make sure council was aware of the potential climate of that building. And, but Jerry brought up that the boxing group that's, has utilized that in the past. So I just wanted to make sure council was aware of that before we did anything more, to make sure there was some support there for this initiative.
Sounds great.
Have you had any problems with the Board of Education, or what's the, you have a relationship with Board of Education?
Some, right.
Okay. Next, I, on the agenda, I put discussion and overview of the land bank initiative. I know this is a, council whip is very passionate, all of council supports it. But there were some questions that popped up online, as well as we have a number of new council members here. And I think it's even helpful for staff to hear how this is going to work. And then, there's an opportunity for council to ask any questions that they have, just to make sure there's an understanding of how this process works. Whenever you're ready.
Yeah, so the land bank, what it's set up to do, you can have five to eleven members. Of course, ours is only going to be five. And one of the nice things about is, opposed to some of the other councils, or some of the other committees, is that we can basically stack it. There only has to be one member that's a non-employer now and council member. Everybody else can technically be a council member or an employee of the city. Just one person has to be a resident, a member of a civic organization, and a non-employee. So that's one of the things, it can, it can work as an extension of the city. Basically, a land bank is gonna hold the property much as the city does, but with more powers to it. We can't, there's no eminent domain, that's the big thing. But otherwise, it's gonna be able to buy property and sell property, much the same way a private citizen can. So, one of the things we like about versus the city holding the property is it's gonna make it easier to sell property. We've had issues in the past where a property, potential purchaser wanted to have us essentially do an owner financing situation. The city can't do that, but the land bank can do an owner financing situation. It can do installment lease agreements, where it does a, basically a lease purchase agreement. It's easier to do that. It's also gonna be easier to sell properties, we don't have to do a public auction in these situations. We just have to come up with a reason and consideration for it. And sometimes that consideration can be less than fair market value, if there's a logical reason why we're doing it. We can attach covenants and conditions. So if we want somebody to buy a piece of property, keep it as a open space, we can put that as a covenant condition in there. So that's one of the benefits of it. If we want them to do, if we're thinking out loud and going, we, somebody comes to us and says, "We want to build a house on this piece of property." Well, you don't want to sit there indefinitely, so we can do an installment lease contract or purchase agreement, says, "If you don't lease the house, within a year, we're not gonna close the sale." So it gives us a lot more control over it. We can set priorities, it talks about public spaces and places, affordable housing, conservation areas, and retail, and commercial. But we, those, those don't have to be the same all over town. So a empty lot in the downtown district, we could put a high priority on retail commercial space. A spot over in our section of town, we could put on single-family dwellings, is what we want. Property is gonna be, still be tax-exempt, so long as we don't lease it to a private entity for more than five years. So it doesn't create a problem with taxation. To me, the best initial use of this land bank is going to be to identify these properties. The city has a bunch of properties around town that are basically empty lots. And they are a drain on public works, because they have to cut them. So, I think the first thing we do is we identify those properties, determine which ones have no strategic value to the city. And, you know, obviously, it's, there's lots and lots, we're not gonna build anything on them. They're too small for a park, we don't want a building there, those sort of things. We identify those properties, we move them over to the land bank at that point in time, or get a plan for how we deal with them. And then after that, it opens you up to a couple possibilities. Once it's in the land bank, we can just offer it to the adjacent landowner, to sell it to that landowner, if we just want, don't even want to deal with it. Or we can start to think of ways to market it for housing or some other issue. So whatever we want to structure that. If you look at Huntington, they have an ongoing list of the properties that they have available for sale. But I think that's one of the first things you do with it, is figure out how we clean up some of these older properties that we just have lots. And that lets us get them out of there and get them done. And also provides a small benefit to the county, because then it gets a back on the tax rolls once we sell them. Not a lot of money, but it is a benefit to the county, which trickles down to us. And I think the big thing is, I know Mr. Workman's talked in the past, it creates an additional burden on the Public Works Department to go cut this stuff. So get it to an adjacent land there for less than fair market value, or figure out how we market it overall. The other big selling point is the tax sale process, and this is, something's gonna be in limbo a little bit. So, the land bank can go to a tax sale just as a normal person can, or a company, and they can buy on the bid process. They can go over and bid it up and buy it outright, same way. They also have a right of first refusal in certain situations. If it's, if the property worth fifty thousand dollars or less, if we have municipal liens more than the taxes, if it's been sold before, and there's a couple other situations. But the main one is the fifty thousand dollar or the municipal liens. At that point, the city, the land bank has a right of first refusal to buy that property just for what the state has in it, for the taxes and the, there's fines and those sort of things that get on it. So we could buy it for that. That's the big selling process. If the property's not redeemed afterwards, the land bank has to offer to the adjacent landowner for basically what we have in it. If the adjacent landowners don't want it, then it stays with the land bank. I will tell you, there's a US Supreme Court case that came down this, in May, that may throw that whole tax sale process into, they basically may throw it out. Something the auditor and the other landbanks, and everyone's gonna have to look at next spring before we get to the tax sales. But basically, what happened in that situation, so I guess, West Virginia specifically, but in Minnesota, I guess how they do their taxes is, if you owe taxes, they take your property, they take title to it, they hold it for three years. If you don't pay it off, then the county or the state owns your property at that point in time. They don't do a sale process. So what happened was, somebody owed fifteen thousand dollars, they didn't pay it. State took the property, state kept the property, state sold the property for forty thousand dollars. And the Supreme Court said, "You can sell it, but you gotta give that twenty-five, the difference, back to them." So that may be a problem for us in the future with this land bank, if we take these properties for the value of the taxes. But I think there's gonna be some ways around that, that we just have to think through. We could keep a running accounting of those, and then when we turn around and sell them, you can give the money back to the taxpayer. We could still bid it and sell it at public auction, those sort of things. There's gonna be ways around that, and I don't think we need to worry about that right this moment, it's what we do once we get forward with it. And hopefully, the state auditor is gonna, and the legislature will lead the charge later this fall and in the spring, and try to come up with, this is how West Virginia thinks we're gonna get around this issue with the Supreme Court. Otherwise, you know, it will become an issue at some point. But again, hopefully that won't, we'll get that resolved at some point in time. But I think that's generally how I look at it, is we get this set up, and at least, at a minimum, we can get these properties and start to figure out a way to market them, whether it's joint landowners or some other idea out there. Because again, you don't have to go through the public auction process. And I think there's some other properties, we can, we got some good ideas we can deal with, that we can talk to you all individually, or with the land bank about, so.
I have a few questions. So, with public works having issues, having cut all, once the land bank owns the property, will public works still have to maintain it, or is it something that could be subcontracted out, or somebody else?
Technically, you could technically subcontract it now. I mean, as long as it's in the land bank, it's still gonna be within the city's whole control in this, and public works is still gonna be cutting the grass.
I'm just looking at, I know public work struggles, like springtime, when the grass is really growing.
Right.
If this opens up opportunities, I thought we couldn't subcontract the grass out. I thought that it'd be.
Well, I think, I think this is a union contract issue, you're right.
There's something, and there's some intricacies there. So that's something we would have to look at, but in the end, it's still the same tax base that's paying for it, right? Whether public works does it, or it's contracted out, it's still the citizens, of course, who are that are paying for that within the land bank.
That is though, if we sue, and I know public work might not like this comment, but if we're able to help them early on in the springtime, that it allows cutting grass, and the complaints will be way down the rest of the year, when the grass slows down a little bit. I know it's, it's, you play catch-up all year.
Well, I think, I think the, the idea would be, is right now, if we want to sell those lots, if we've got a lot sitting over wherever, in Broad Oaks, or in Adamston, or wherever it's at, if we want to sell that, right now, we have to notice that, and we have to do a public auction for that. We can't just go to the adjacent landowner, even if it's a small little lot, you're like, this thing's, nobody wants this. So then you have to go through that whole process to do that. Once it's in the land bank, we don't have to do that. We could immediately, we could transfer to the land bank and immediately offer to sales to those adjacent landowners, and we skip that whole public process. That's how I view it helping the public works, because it gets it, it gives us a clear mechanism between now and spring, as you were talking about, to at least maybe get rid of some of these properties. Because we, we say, "Okay, this property is worthless to the city. We don't think it has any strategic value, public works has to cut it, let's move over to the land bank, adjacent property owners, do you want this property? If they say yes, stroke the check, we do them a D, and then we're done with it." But no, if we're gonna keep them, and keep them to do the issues with, to try to sell them and market them on a larger scale, then yeah, ultimately, the city's gonna deal with it somehow, cutting the grass.
And so you said that we're able to help facilitate financing, essentially? So would that be like a land contract type of deal, to where they can pay on pay on, and once they, they default, and we could get it back, even if they, even if they build on it, or is that, is that the way the contract would be put back?
Looking at it, I don't think this, I'd have to go back and look at the code carefully, see if you can do a land contract on it. Because a land contract's different than deed and deed and trust. But what it does indicate is that we can do secured loans on it. So there's nothing that stops us from doing owner financing from perspective that, okay, I Richard Marsh sells this piece of property to Jerry Riffle. Jerry Riffle now owns it, but Jerry Riffle's gonna, has a deed and trust against it in my favor, and he's gonna pay me back the five hundred dollars a month over it, just same principles of back. Because there's two ways to do people to do owner financing. Do this land contract, like you're talking about, where the seller maintains ownership of the property, and basically, it's almost a lease to a. I'm not sure if we can do that, we can look at it, but we can do, which is what preferable anyway, is do the deed, they own it, we hold a deed and trust against it, just like a bank would. But that can be done.
How long does the original owner have to come back and redeem the property?
How long does the original owner have to come back and redeem the property?
I believe it is about six months. I, I'd have to go back and look, because they changed, remember, the state changed that whole system about how the taxes are done. It used to be the taxes were, they sold them in the fall and you had into eighteen months to redeem. The state has greatly short-circuited that, and now I think we're, I think it's six or nine months or so. You don't have a long period of time once it's been done by the state auditor, but that's completely separate apart from the land bank situation. There's nothing, that's, if anybody goes out and buys it.
I had a question, because the right of first refusal is, is pretty much, was part of that legislation as sort of a game changer, you know, with, with these municipal landbanks, and now with a Supreme Court case coming up, it may kind of throw a wrench in that. What would be an example, if you know one off the top of your head, that would be a way we could, we could get around possibly that, that case if it, if it would come up?
So if we're keeping the, say we exercise a right of first refusal by the property, property ends up in the land bank's hands after that right of redemption period. I think one of the ways you deal with that is, at that point, you don't, we take the position that we can't give a right of first refusal to the adjacent landowner, because that would be arguably unconstitutional. What we do is we give the right of first refusal to the, the landowner for a fair market value, based upon whatever it happens to be. If the, if the adjacent landowner takes that property for fair market value, then the city keeps the money it has in the property, and the remainder goes back to the taxpayer. I think the other option that they're gonna have is, assuming we don't do that landowner, adjacent landowner sale, you're basically gonna keep it on your books until you sell it at such a time that it is a, for a fair market value somehow. And then you're gonna be responsible for paying over that difference, that extra money, over above what you have in it. I think you're gonna be able to keep, my argument would be, what I think this land bank's ultimately gonna do is set up a system where it keeps track of what money it has in. So if it's still cutting the grass, it assesses that and is able to tack that on, but ultimately, it's gonna probably pay that money back. That's not sure, it's complete speculation, and again, it's something that we're gonna, not just us, but the state is gonna have to, and others are gonna have to wrestle with. I know there's, been a couple of articles already come out in Ohio about how they're gonna tackle the issue. Their landbanks are set up similar, and they're gonna have to figure out how to tackle it. And I think it's just something that's gonna be dealt with across the country, with the England has similar land bank ordinances. But I think that's the, the two ways I can think of. And then the other way is if it's a piece of property the city would really want for some reason. I don't think anything stops the city from going over and bidding on it in a normal course of action. And at, at that point, I think it just falls within this standard process, and there's no problem with it.
Thank you, Richard.
You're welcome.
Can I be asked that questions? Thank you, sir.
May I just want to ask if we can move C below H and just run through the rest of the agenda, because it'll be quite quick before I have Richard come up into that one. That's all right?
That's fine.
Which way are we doing?
I'm just gonna move C to the end of the agenda, that's.
Fair enough.
So I will move on to, uh, D. Will, you wanted to discuss, um.
Uh, well, this was something that came to me, I mean, we currently have the state going in and doing the ADA sidewalks. And, you know, we've heard for the last several years that, you know, we're gonna wait, we're gonna wait for the state road to go and pave. Well, I'm looking at, you know, just from, you know, the outside looking in here, and, you know, if the, if the state thinks it's okay to go in and do the ADA sidewalks, and they haven't paved the road yet, I'm curious if we should just go ahead and, and find a way to do our sidewalks on Main Street and just, you know. So it, obviously, it's the number one concern that I hear from people around the town about the condition of the sidewalks, not only on Main and Pike, but elsewhere, but, uh, we passed, I believe, a resolution to enter a grant to, to the Plinell sidewalks, which I thought probably wasn't the greatest idea, considering the condition of our Main Street sidewalks. So I think, uh, as long as council can get, you know, agree, we need to instruct our grant riders and our staff to go after some grants for Main Street, see what we can do. And maybe by the time that those grants come through, maybe they will be paid in Main Street, I don't know. It's just, it's just frustrating to see the state do something that we're being told we can't do because of the road. I mean, it's, it's a little frustrating. I mean, and, you know, they're gonna, they're doing every single one of them. So, I mean, here we are, we're, we're not doing anything. And meanwhile, the state is acting, and we're not. So it's just, again, it's a little frustrating, and I'd like to see that change.
Strategically, we should do the sidewalks before the road anyways, that's better construction, I mean, strategy. You do the, you do the road before the sidewalks, and they're tearing up the road again. Because sidewalks don't come right up, the curbs don't come right up, they tear up the road as well, so.
Yeah, I mean, contractors are in there fixing the road at the same time that the road that they tear up. I mean, this, this process is being done whether we act or not. I mean, it's a, and it's a little frustrating, because, you know, we're, we constantly hear about.
I mean, if we do the sidewalks.
And, you know, this is the number one issue I hear outside of some public safety and other things, but, I mean, here we are, we're not doing anything. While the state, after we've been told for several years at least, that, you know, well, we gotta wait for the state to do this. Here, here's the state doing something that we're being told not to do, so by our staff, and, you know, I understand it, I get it, you know, uh, you know, to tear up the road and after we do the sidewalks, I mean, but, you know, wouldn't they be responsible for fixing the sidewalks that they tear up?
No, no, I'm saying it's, it's better for us to do the sidewalks before the road is done.
Oh, okay, well, I mean.
Because you tear up the road.
That's kind of not what staff and others have been telling us for the last several years. So, I mean, you know, but we've been told, you know, we should wait for the state road to go do, go in and do it. I mean, at least that's how I understand it.
Yeah, I do sidewalks, is what I'm telling you, so we pull up sidewalks, you pull up roads as well. So if we did pave the road and then tear sidewalks that road, it won't be dramatic, it'll be edge stuff, but we don't want to be doing that again and patching it. Because once you do that, you start patching it already, even if it is without the parking spots.
Well, now, I'd just like to add to that, because, I mean, we're already, there are, the state's already doing the ADA curb cuts. The main section of concern is, is pretty much Main Street between Fourth Street and, and probably Third Street, that block. That's where the most complaints are when it comes to the safety hazard, that's where our sidewalks look like a Tetris board, you know. So my question is, is that, is that something that ARPA funds could pay for? Can that be an ARPA fund allocation?
I don't see why it could not.
I mean, because it's an infrastructure thing. I mean, we've talked about it for a long time. I feel like that if we just say, let's just write a grant for it, we're gonna be waiting another couple of years.
I agree.
More people are gonna be tripping and falling, and, you know, it's a, and, and the concrete is the aggregate concrete anyway that's on there, and it's not really that durable. Probably just need a regular concrete, because even if you, even if you had to, you know, say if, say if the water board had to come in there and replace a couple of lines, and it did affect some of those Main Street sidewalks that we just put in, if you put it in with regular concrete, you could just resurface it with regular concrete. It's hard with this aggregate concrete that we have in sidewalks right now, just to, just to replace it with regular concrete. You know, so I mean, I, I mean, that's, that's my question. I mean, if this is something that ARPA funds could pay for, you know, um, if that's a legitimate use of ARPA funds because of infrastructure, whatever, sidewalks, then, then I, my question would be, you know, the city manager, can staff, you know, look into that and see if that's something, you know, that's viable and come back to us with, you know, with some sort of plan?
It seems kind of, sorry, but it seems kind of silly, you know, people come to, come to me and they say, well, we can't do, why, why are sidewalks in such horrible shape? And, you know, it's like, well, we're waiting on the state to come in and repaint Main and Pike. And it's like, here we are, they're, they're literally tearing up every single intersection.
I didn't know that was why we were waiting, I thought we were waiting to come try and put a grant. I thought we were trying that in Main Street.
Grant, sorry?
Yeah, yeah, that's what, no.
Yeah, just along with the plans, we have several grants pending, um, pending approval or awards status, I should say, rather. Um, one through appropriations process, through both lender, Capito and Mansion's office, and then we also have another through the main, um, type account.
Yeah, I, I never saw that.
Program, so we do, yeah, so, so those are pending, those are submitted and pending approval.
Yeah, I always thought it was funny, I never, I never saw the two issues combined, I never saw.
Seems like that's what I always heard we're being told.
I thought we were waiting to see what the water board was gonna do.
That could be an issue too.
Yeah, I mean, that, but that, there's no, I mean, how much infrastructure water, I mean, I can tell, not much, right?
No, I'm not talking about sidewalks, I'm talking about streets.
There's a.
Are they coming, excuse me, are they coming down Main Street, Pike Street, new water lines, John?
They used to be a part of your, your.
So, you know, if state comes in and black, I mean, we do the sidewalks, the state comes in and black cops, and then we have everything being tore up again. Doesn't make a lot of sense.
I agree, but, you know, it seems kind of silly that here comes, the state's doing it, right?
But I agree with you that the sidewalks.
Doesn't really seem to matter to them. Of course, I got a lot more money than we do, but, you know.
So Josh, how much infrastructure issues do you see underneath the sidewalks that we would need to do if we tore them up? Was there any opportunities that you see, uh, that's sure or anything?
There's infrastructure, there's land, there's, same as your ladder, living buildings, you would never be that deep with your sidewalks.
I'm saying, do you see, what opportunities do you see if we do take up the sidewalks?
Waterline project, if they're shooting for Main Street, it's locked down up in the sign yet, to find out whether they're gonna just do laterals, whether they're gonna do the town main and laterals, they got two different levels. Order that's got planned, they don't have far enough design yet, I'm sitting in here myself, we've been in contact with the water, we've been in contact with the U.S., it's about something we haven't discussed yet. We're trying to get into the situation, we've worked on all of this together. I agree with you one hundred percent, now is the time to do the sidewalks, if we can make everything involved in place.
And that's, we've met twice now, twice now, um, we're trying to figure out everything all at once so it makes sequential sense instead of constructing, tearing apart, constructing, tearing apart. Because in the end, the more of that you do, it's costing the same people money, the taxpayers, it just has to make sense.
I remember you discussed the timeline briefly at thirty things financially, and, yeah.
We're, we're working on that right now, and once we had more of a concrete answer for council, we were going to bring it to council. But, um, right now, we don't have anything to let council know, and I mentioned to, to a couple of councillors, once I have that information, I will bring it forward to council.
Well, I mean, if, if our Public Works superintendent is saying like, now's the time to do the sidewalks, I mean, I mean, apparently, this has been looked into.
I mean, hypothetically, over construction phase wise, this would be the time to do it. I don't, financially, that's not the same, you know, the same discussion, but. And I, and also, I would like to maybe upgrade our, um, you know, maybe we can add water lines to water the, the plants, you know, why, just turning on a spigot, you know, I mean, like, doing things like that, increasing the, upgrading the electric to where it comes to festival, we don't gotta bring out the drop boxes for festivals, I mean, little things like that, tearing the sidewalk, I think we should also look at doing that at the same time as well. But that's bigger.
So with, with the funding mechanism that has been discussed, I mean, we, we already have grants in the hopper for this Main Street sidewalk project, and one of those, you know, they're pending, when, when do we plan on hearing back from those?
We got an update from the appropriations process, actually today, like one of our, um, grants will actually benefit the police department, uh, plan on to the next stage, uh, the next, like, kind of like, um, I don't know. Yeah, review period is September thirtieth, so that will show like whether things are, are moved into the, the next stage of this process. Uh, but the allocations won't be made until like February, March for appropriations.
Okay.
Uh, so if they are successful, February, March for appropriations, um, otherwise, the project has also been submitted through HUD, um, through like the federal solicitation of the same program, so that's not non-legislative. Get it directed by the senators, Senator Capito and Senator Mansion.
And this involves the, the downtown sidewalks too?
Yes, both of the projects, the, the scope of her, her, both of those projects are submitted three different ways, for his name, and I'm happy to send the information, um, because I think that will be really helpful.
I mean, I mean, it is, it's kind of turned into a public safety issue. I mean, we already had someone trip in front of the courthouse on these sidewalks, and, and like Will said, I mean, there's been all kinds of complaints. I get complaints about it all the time. I mean, it's our central business district, and, um, and the state's coming in and they're doing all these curb cuts, and then we have sidewalks that people are tripping over. And so, I mean, I, I look at it as, if you have a lot of foot traffic in your downtown central business district, you would think that that would be a priority to try to, try to replace those sidewalks as expeditiously as possible. I understand funding is tough, uh, but we still have, what, about one point six, one point eight million dollars left in, in ARPA funds? You know, and if that is a, if that is a proper designated use for that, then that's something maybe we'll look for the city manager to get staff to make recommendations and explore.
If I may just add, at one point, we most recently adopted a budget for this fiscal year, does include two hundred and twenty thousand dollars more paying its sidewalk plans, so assuming we don't even get the grant stat recommended, you can put in at least some money immediately to sidewalks. So there is, budget has.
Okay.
Not necessarily enough to do a lot, but it would be able to get a pretty big section. We've looked at that Third and Fourth Street as the primary, because that is high traffic area and also our sidewalks.
Okay.
And also, we need to kind of move that, sort of drawing board in terms of like capital expenditures, looking at getting these like, you know, ride here, it's out, or.
Having a full C I D process that we can provide you with this information is, it would be more an engineering report than those two points.
Okay. I mean, I, that, that's, that sounds good too, I mean, it's coming from an engineer, and it's good too, but I think we would also need some sort of projected cost of what that section would look like, because up here, we're, you know, we're grappling over, okay, how much is this gonna cost, and none of us know how much is this, this is gonna cost, so. Would that be something that you'd be able to work on, Tiffany, to bring to us?
Yeah, I have it noted to bring to our senior leadership meeting.
Thanks.
It'll come up again on an upcoming work session agenda as well. Um, next, we have the discussion regarding the Leadership of Health and Wellness Committee. Mark, that was, or Counselor Jackson, sorry, that was you.
Uh, yes, uh, I'm a little loose, I'm not real sure how the whole process works, but, um, what I was looking at is, I would like to see the creation of a committee that will gather resources to address the addiction and homelessness issue in our city. I'm thinking this should be a, this should be a committee that's comprised of council representative, organizations and individuals within the community, Board of Education, County Commission, uh, we need everybody at the table. This is an issue that's gone on in our city for years, and it's pretty much gone unaddressed. No one's really, you know, done anything with this. There are organizations right here within our city that do things with this, and we're not utilizing those resources. And I've also had a couple of conversations, I've talked to a person there with an organization, it's called the Appalachian Region Commission. And I gave everyone up here a packet, and that packet shows some of the projects that they have funded over the past couple of years. So, you know, I think it's important that, you know, we pull a committee together. It'll take, I'm sure, probably a vote of all of the councillors to agree to something like this. But, uh, you know, one of the other things that we have to be, uh, we have to be aware of is that the, uh, the dollars for the opioid settlements are starting to roll in, and they're starting to put those teams together that are gonna be in charge of dispersing those funds. We need to have a plan in place so that when those monies are actually starting to be dispersed, we can actually reach out. Our county was ravaged by the opioid epidemic. At one point in time, we led the nation in drug overdose deaths. So, you know, we need to make sure that we start putting a plan together right now, we need to put a committee together. Uh, we have, um, the Homeless Coalition, uh, we have the West Virginia Prevention Solutions over here on Sixth Street. Everyone, we need to bring everyone to the table, because what we're gonna be faced with is, in about another couple of years, we're gonna have all these kids who lost parents and brothers and sisters, and they're gonna be going through the school system. We're gonna be dealing with a lot of trauma, and we need to make sure that we've got all the pieces in place so that we're able to address this, and we don't wind up back where we're at right now. Also, uh, one of the things that I've been keeping a close eye on, and, uh, I haven't reached out yet, because I want to make sure I give her time to get acclimated into her position, uh, the city of Morgantown just hired a social worker. And this is someone who will work as, and serves as a conduit between certain, um, members of the. And this is someone who will work as, and serves as a conduit between certain, um, members of the public and the police department. So the police don't have to be social workers. This is an individual who will work with the police department and deal with these individuals. So, you know, to start putting things together, putting things in place, you know, I think right now is the time to do that. Um, also, you know, we don't want members of our, of our city to think that we forgot about them because we have these issues going on out here. I think it would be a great idea to have this committee work to try to bring individuals back into downtown to start walking. You know, and our sidewalks are going to be a big part of that. Uh, I think that, you know, it's critical that we get that foot traffic back in downtown. Because if we talk about revitalizing downtown and bringing new businesses in, foot traffic is going to be paramount. You're going to have to have that foot traffic. And, you know, I've talked to some business owners and that's what they say, you know what, we, there's nobody here after five o'clock in the evening. When the courthouse shuts down, that's pretty much your biggest version of people. They're up out of here. So, um, you know, those things need to be looked at. And I, I think, you know, one of the important things is, let's turn the music back on in downtown. You know, it doesn't cost us anything. If the system's not working, you know, I asked, you know, if we can get that fixed, you know, that, that'll generate some conversation. You know what, I was in Clarksburg the other day, the music was on. You know, it costs us next to nothing. You know, if we can get people just walking the streets and they're just hearing the music. But we need to start doing something, we need to start putting these things in place and moving forward, you know, so that people can see we're working for them.
Had a question for, uh, for Mark. Are there other, other municipalities right now that you know of that, that have a health and wellness committee or something similar to that?
Uh, I haven't found any, but, uh, you know, I feel that this is something, you know, if we need to be the, uh, the ones who spearhead this, I think we should do it.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, I think it's a great idea because, I mean, this, you know, this opioid crisis, which is now a methamphetamine crisis. I mean, it is cannibalizing us.
These are, those health and wellness committees are very common in Canada. So they exist in almost every government organization.
I just want to make sure we have some sort of format. Because, I mean, we are, we are a municipality and a lot of times we, we combat, you know, we combat, you know, drugs on more on the supply side, you know, with law enforcement and stuff. Because, you know, primarily that's our function up here, those basic services, you know, infrastructure, public safety, that sort of thing. But it would be nice, I think, if we did have some, a committee, even, even if, if it's a formal committee that would be able to, you know, be able to have some plans on how to, you know, work with staff, work with the city manager to, to leverage some opioid dollars and other grants and stuff that could potentially help, you know, not only other existing agencies and organizations that are trying to fight this epidemic, but, you know, even potentially, you know, um, you know, creating other positions. You know, if there's temporary positions within the city to, to start addressing this. I know, you know, um, we are doing a lot of litter cleanups and also neighborhood watch. Um, some, sometimes we would run into, you know, trespassing situations and, and folks, you know, in encampments and stuff. And we would notify law enforcement. And, and law enforcement had a really good relationship at the time with, uh, with Marissa Rexrode, um, which was part of the United Ways Homeless Coalition. And I would see a lot of law enforcement officers, um, with folks that were living out in the streets, maybe had some substance use disorder problem. They were, they were given Marissa's card and said, you know, hey, you know, uh, you know, contact her. Now, no, yeah, she's pretty much, you know, like the only one that's, that's trying to tackle that, that's sort of the conduit that I've seen a couple of years ago with, with police department. You know, with, with trying to get people, you know, help, you know, connected with other organizations that to get them some sort of help or housing or treatment. But you're right, you know, police officers are not social workers nor should they be social workers. And so I think having a formal committee that would also, you know, be able to work with the police chief, you know, um, and, and see some best, and kind of, you know, um, kind of bring together some best practices, I think would be good too. Uh, but we have to develop that format. And the best way to do that is to look at other municipalities and see how they do.
If, um, council's generally supportive of this, we can take and take it back to staff. Maybe create a terms of reference for a committee structure and what the goals, objectives would be. Okay.
Uh, about the music, that took a lot of years off my life worrying about that when I first got on campus. Uh, got, got Harry to do it. Got the music playing for like three days. I had to text him every morning to hit and press play. Um, and so then it would play and then all of a sudden it started like getting static and it broke again. Maybe he just didn't want to press play anymore, or I don't know what it was. But I think there was issues with the system that I think Bridgeport or not, there's an audio company in Bridgeport, I think came and looked at it. So they came and looked at it, I don't know how much money we spent. Uh, but there is a system back there, there's a little, little computer that was back there. Um, so I think there was some things, they cut the wire yesterday when they were doing the sidewalk. Uh, so, I wanted maybe the main, but there was issues with it. And so there was going to be some cost to it, but I agree with it.
We'll take a look at it.
Um, we had a few people complain about the music because it was too close and it was. Oh, it's selection? Yeah, we got a new DJ, so the lady, obviously, as ever, so.
We'll take a look at that as well. Um, and next we'll move on to, so this is the discussion regarding the ordinance to amend planning and zoning section for, um, giving a tax break. So I put this back, it's on the agenda, but I put this on the conference session because I wanted to talk to council about this. And I'm going to make a recommendation to council that when it comes up on the agenda that you table that discussion um, and defer that ordinance. I really think council needs to discuss creating that, setting out a geographical area because I know council wants to revitalize downtown. If you want to revitalize downtown, I really think you should consider creating a tax break for that geographical area for downtown. Because every time a new business comes in, you don't want to be firefighting your way out of that and saying, they need a tax break, let's put it through an ordinance for a specific business or a specific industry. If you want to bring people into downtown, um, my recommendation would be that you create a tax break, whatever that geographical boundary is set out for downtown, that any new business, whether it's a new build or a lease that's coming into downtown will have access to. So that any new business that comes into downtown is going to help revitalize it. Whether it's accounting agency or a brewery, or a restaurant, or a dentist's office. The more bodies you have downtown, you're bringing life back to downtown. So to make it attractive for people to come into downtown Clarksburg, I believe you need an ordinance that has a, a blanket, um, tax break policy for that area. And that's, I just wanted to bring that up to council and get some feedback from council on that.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I thought we passed an ordinance that did that when there was talk of the brewery coming in, that would be for all businesses. Seems like this, this one that we have been discussing is a newer one that specifically deals with these organizations or businesses.
I want to cut manager off. The item before tonight involves land use change. So it'd be permitting alcoholic beverage sales establishments in the downtown. It, it doesn't involve a tax, it doesn't involve anything related to taxes.
Okay, but the, the ordinance that's, and I maybe didn't put the right one on the agenda, but there's an ordinance specifically for tax breaks for brewery. That's what I was speaking of.
Okay, um, yeah, that was not, we had, um, the council had previously approved a, the 10-year tax break. So that's the five-year for changing office space, but the brewery one, yeah, that's, that was not before them tonight.
But that, that does apply though, right? It's like, is there an ordinance, my understanding, for the, just the brewery, right?
No, no, it was, it was, the conversation was started because of the brewery, but then it just went to retail and changing of office space.
Yeah.
So is it for any business or only retail?
Retail.
It'd be for, only for retail and only, only the eligible prop, the only eligible properties are vacant structures. And that's with a specific vacancy requirement. Condemned structures are those that are office spaces that are being converted to retail. The idea being we'd be able to capture what would have been, be a no tax into the sales tax.
So I just want to make sure that that ordinance is for council to consider, that it's for all businesses that are coming into downtown, not industry specific, to encourage everybody to move into our, into our downtown.
I don't believe it was, I mean, if I remember correctly, there was.
Did she say including professionals?
He's saying it's retail, he's saying it's just retail. And I think maybe there's a, like that's, I was explaining it wasn't for every industry when I looked into it. Maybe the original conversation was, I'm like, I don't know, but maybe that needs clarification.
And maybe we could put that on a work session agenda for, for next, next conference. Because it's not really.
It's been passed and.
Yeah, it's not really even on this agenda that we even talk about.
Okay, then we'll, I'll do that. Um, and next is the youth sports organization funding. Um, so that policy, um, we created a policy for this. So there's a $6,000 funding line in the budget for, I think it's sports organizations, that's new. When I looked into, I, after our last council meeting, I got a whole slew of emails asking to apply for this grant. Um, and when I spoke to the city clerk, there was no, nothing in writing on how much you could apply for, who you, who could apply, um, or what the scope of that grant was for. So we created a, a policy, I'm looking for a name from council, council on what you want to call this grant as well. What's the maximum amount people could apply for it, $6,000? Um, in speaking with councillor Riffle, I think one of the intentions was it had to be a not-for-profit. Um, but wanted to know, we're, we have all these emails that we have to respond to. Is there a max amount you want as a council? Um, how many times some of you can apply? Um, is it just a not-for-profit sports or is it not-for-profits like a dance company? Like what are the parameters for that budget line?
So it's all, well, the original, so 6,000 came from making a max of 1,000 per, per organization. With the focus on trying to, um, nonprofit, the bigger leagues like the soccer league, the baseball league, and the bigger organizations that, um, have, you know, 35 to 40 cars for, for area residents and they participate in the city, like so they have the fields here, this is where their games are at. Um, so that was the focus of, of that. So that's why the 6,000 came. There was, there was, I mean, that's how we got into the budget. But I, I thought we passed something down to finance department. Uh, when Steve, when we discussed it, um, we had some basic parameters of what it would be. Or maybe it was Mark was still in, I'm not sure. You, I, I don't, I talked to somebody.
What, what's the maximum amount that an organization can apply for?
1,000 is what the, the idea was and we discussed that. I mean, I think it was in a previous work session and we, that was all discussed as well.
Well, I think it was supposed, somebody was supposed to come up with a form or how you.
Procedure.
Yeah, I thought that, I thought that was passed on the finance, I don't know, I thought that's where it went to finance.
I couldn't find anything.
Okay, well, maybe that was, that was the plan at least.
And that, so that's, there's a form now, a grant application form. Um, I think maybe the $1,000 is a bit high. That only gives access to six groups for an entire year. Um, I think maybe 500 is a little bit more, um, just gives more opportunity to more groups. Um, but again, it's up to council. And there's nothing limiting saying that a group can apply twice during the year if they have two different events. But in spring, you could use up those six applications and then there's nothing left for fall when sports comes up again, so. Uh, but I just need to know what council wants so I can create this policy so we can get back to, we respond to those interested parties. But we need to be able to give them a form and, and the parameters of the program.
In the past, have the people applied for the grants, have they used up all that money?
This is brand new.
This is brand new, so it's, okay.
So, I mean, me being involved in a lot of the youth sports organizations, I, I mean, with football league, they needed all new help. I mean, so I, I was trying to help the bigger organizations that help the most kids, they have the bigger, the biggest expenses. Um, so that's why it came down to like six organizations, uh, if they wanted to, and they have to have nonprofit status. Uh, that's the biggest thing because the money, once it's given out, you give it to, uh, you know, like, another organization that doesn't have the nonprofit status, we can't follow that money, we can't make sure the money was used right. If you have a nonprofit status, they have to file for the state, there's, uh, we're protected within understanding they're going to spend it as they should. Um, I mean, that was, that was the goal, that's why it came with 6,000, that's where, that's how we all decided that.
Should there be like half in the spring and half in the fall or something? That way it covers more sports as well?
I think all organizations would apply.
Right, when it opens?
When it opens, uh, when, when, no matter when they, uh.
Okay.
I don't, I'm, my question is like, sports, does that include, uh, dance?
Yeah, if it's a nonprofit, um, yeah.
Right, does that fall under the umbrella of sports?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, use, I mean, I think there was a, it's been a while since I last had the, um, conversation, but I don't, I don't think any of the dance groups was like, um, nonprofits. I think most of them were, were profits, uh, from my understanding. If there is some, yeah, they could definitely apply. But I mean, I, maybe we should have some more.
Like a definition of what a sport is, what's included and what's not.
Yeah, Doc, the, the last three pages of the, uh, conference session, I guess, agenda is pretty thorough. I mean, I, I was looking it over, uh, last couple of days, I'm looking at it right now, I'm gonna, uh, I think we could probably maybe polish it up for the next meeting and, and pass it, I mean, I think.
You're referring to this, the policy document that was, yeah, it, I made it pretty specific. I was just, it, the only reason I'm suggesting the 500 over the 1,000 is because you never know when other groups are going to pop up, right? Um, I just want to make sure that lots of groups have the opportunity. Because it, it's just not great if they would come, let's say in September and the funding's all gone. Like, that's never a great answer to give out, so, um.
And I think from a, a programmatic standpoint, um, that's something that I think staff or a committee or if you, if you try to form a committee on this, you have to get members and stuff and.
We already formed one.
We already formed, okay, so we, we formed one. So, so I would think programmatically, like maybe the, the committee should, should, um, should formulate the form, you know, with, you know, with a consultation with, with the city manager, that sort of thing.
That was my first two years on council.
Better as a committee, right, Jerry?
Yep.
Okay.
It's not, it hasn't been.
It's not a committee, it's a council committee here.
Uh, no, but you see two.
Oh, okay, so the committee doesn't really exist.
There's a lot of drama in the first two years.
It doesn't really charge on.
Okay, yeah, because.
Well, you should make some calls here, I guess.
I had, um, I had human resources wrapped up the application form and I drafted the policy. So, um, it's pretty comprehensive. I just need direction on, A, I think you should label the grants. So do you just want to label the local city youth sports grant? And then just including here, um, what's classified as a sport. But the, the policy itself gives discretion to council. If we don't label it in there, then council has some latitude as well.
Why, why don't you put a copy of these in our mailboxes so we can look at them?
I'm hearing passing the budget for the money, I'm okay with, with staff, um, fixing it and changing it and making it to where they seem, they see that, uh, maybe through discussions of organizations that have already reached out. Or, I mean, I don't think we need to make something with a pass by council. I mean, I'd be okay with taking the lead on it, I mean, but I mean, I don't know.
That's a good point, Jerry. I mean, I, I, I think, you know, like I said, from a programmatic standpoint, it should either be the committee or staff. You come back with.
I do think you guys need to, the council needs to pass a policy saying the max amount we can give out. I, that it's in the budget, it's a budget I know. My friend will believe that, that council should be setting those parameters.
And that's fine, but you make the recommendation.
Make the recommendation, okay. Okay. I think we can move forward with that and bring it to the next council meeting. I think after the next council meeting, the next day, I got six emails about applying. I actually thought that people got confused with the Thrasher $1,000 donation and they were applying for the Thrasher donation.
Oh, okay.
From that last meeting is what I think happened.
I thought we all paid a debt for the mayor's youth council.
We did, I think there was a misunderstanding when people were listening to, at least I think that's, I thought that's what happened. Um, just an update from the previous meeting. So the gazebo, after talking with staff, is going to go up at the shooting range, um, that we shared with our police department and the FBI. The reason for that is it's not a commercial unit that we purchased, so we shouldn't really be putting in any of our parks that the public can use. Um, it's a, it's a residential piece of equipment. The neighborhood sign that the, um, one of our residents came in and talked to, she wanted her neighborhood sign moved because her bush was covering it. Public Works went out and looked and they're going to move that sign to accommodate that request. And then, um, for Charlie Hardland, after discussing with staff, um, And then, um, for Charlie Hardman, after discussing with staff, um, staff felt putting up a flagpole with a plaque on the flagpole would be the best way to, um, honor, um, Charlie Hardman. So we are looking at getting an easement from the property owner and getting quotes on that and erecting that at that facility as well. I just want to make sure that I update council on these things so they don't fall by the wayside.
Can we get like a rough drawing of what that will look like or anything before you purchase it? I just want to make sure we, we honor them.
Like the plaque itself?
What, the flagpole, the whole thing, whatever, whatever it's going to look like.
Yeah, and I actually.
But I definitely want to make sure we honor them right.
Um, and that piece, if you pull that up on your phone, what we're at least thinking so they can see that, I set that picture to you. Um, and while she's doing that, we can bring Richard. We have Richard about ten minutes. We can, we can go oversee or would council like to review the agenda package first to make sure we get through that?
I think we have any questions, we just make a motion in a second to have discussion.
Then, uh, Richard, whenever you're ready.
So, Manager Fell asked me to go over just some briefly, some of the ethical obligations in the Open Meetings Act. Uh, I'm going to send you all later, the AG's office as well, the Ethics Board all has good handouts on this information. So I'll email that all to you later to, to review it at your leisure, which kind of covers all these things. I just want to hit some of the highlights here. For gifts, generally you can't accept any gifts more than twenty-five dollars. Uh, the exception for that is for meals, uh, when the person buying them is with you. So if the person buying is with you, according to the handout, that they can pay for your meal regardless of the price, but they have to be there paying for it. Gifts, this is one that can get people in trouble. It's no solicitation of any employees for gifts, including for charitable purposes. There's some indication that, yeah, I'll have to go back and look at it specifically, but, you know, you're not supposed to take up any sort of charitable purposes by soliciting the employees of the city. Uh, there is no such as be a financial disclosure form filed each year with the Ethics Commission. But the Ethics Commission has a, a simple three-page handout on this, and I'll send it to you. It's a pretty easy one, uh, to follow. Voting, we need to remember that if you have a financial interest in something, we need to recuse yourself and the recusal needs to probably be thought up beforehand, before we get up and start discussing it so you can leave before the discussion starts. That's one of the issues. And you need to leave the room. So it's one of the reasons to review the agenda beforehand to see if there's anything you need to recuse yourself on. And at that time, perhaps give the, uh, the mayor the heads up that you need to recuse yourself on that so that we don't just roll right into it. It would be a good practice at that point. One of the big issues that, uh, Manager Fell wanted to deal with was Open Meetings Act and how we deal with that. We have to remember the meeting occurs whenever there's a quorum of a public body and there's expected to be discussion on taking some official action. That's the key, is there going to be an official discussion of taking official action in the future? So, and this is, uh, we were joking about back there, the idea that this was a conference session versus a work session. And I've, I've made this comment before, I hate the phrasing, work session, conference session, all these things, because they're all meetings. The code doesn't talk about what a work session or conference session. It's all meetings. So everything, when the public body is meeting with a quorum with the intention of moving forward, whether at that meeting or a later meeting, it's going to be a meeting. There has to be minutes taken in each meeting. That's not so much an issue in city council meetings, but we have had that issue in the past at some of the smaller committee meetings when, uh, one of the, either Annette or Paula are not there. If they're there, I, I don't think the minutes have ever been an issue. So the other issue is agenda and sticking to it. We want to stick to the agenda. And so what you want to do is you can ask a staff member a question that's not on the agenda or you can ask, but if it's on the agenda, and, and we don't do it in and out because we have more structure than this pre-conference meeting. But before, the pre-conference meeting was kind of a bit more fluid. So the idea is you could ask a staff member for a question, but you don't want to get a whole discussion with them because then when everybody else starts discussing that, it's not on the agenda and you're moving and having discussion towards a final resolution on that matter, taking some sort of final decision. The other thing was the email. That was, again, one of the things that Manager Fell is concerned about. So it's clear as mud if you look at the ethics opinions on it. But what we can say is that there's no problem with staff sending out an email to all of council, including whatever packet or information they want to. At that point, a council member can reply to that staff member or to staff as a whole, if there's multiple staff members, but they shouldn't reply to the other council members. So, for example, if Manager Fell sends out an email, I'm CC'd on it and is to tell all council members, and Councilman Hyman has a question, there's nothing stops him from shooting an email back. And he can include the manager and myself on that, or for that matter, if the finance director or whoever can include that, but he should not include the other council members and pose that question and we can give a response to that. Because that's not a meeting, that's not a discussion moving towards a, you know, final decision because there's no quorum. Uh, now, we can't do that in such a manner that you can't play the, the phone tag where you call up one person, say, what are you going to do? And then work that to try to avoid the open meetings. So the example they give in this is draft minutes. So if Annette sends out draft minutes to everybody, which I don't think we, I guess they are included in there. Uh, and I've never seen this happen to us, but draft minutes are sent out. At that point, uh, Councilman Wright sees it and says, I don't think this was accurate. There's nothing stops her from sending an email back to Clerk Wright, as well as any other staff members on there and say, I don't believe these minutes are right. This needs to be changed. That's fine. However, at that point, Clerk Wright, and I shouldn't have chose you two as my example. Clerk Wright should not make those changes and then send it back out to everybody. That should be something that should be recognized and she can bring it up during the next council meeting. Or somebody else can bring it up and it can be discussed. Because the way to describe it is this, this is verbatim from it. However, staff should not, so here's how draft minutes can be circulated. A council member may respond individually to staff and suggest changes to the minutes. That's verbatim from the language. However, staff should not then circulate draft correction to minutes because this would exceed the limitations and the opinion. A draft correction necessarily implies that an original draft document has already been received. Consequently, a draft correction represents the next step in the dialogue regarding what the document should ultimately say. So in other words, if we send out a draft to you of something, it could be anything, feel free to email back, but don't expect to get an updated draft of that document back to the whole group. That's kind of how we're looking at it and that's how we're going to treat it. But if you all have, there's nothing stops it from going from staff to you all and then from one of you back to staff. And that's, and then you can bring that up again. And I think the goal is to have that discussion in an open meeting. So if whatever, uh, the mayor talks about with the finance director, he can bring that up during open discussion and say, you know, when this email came out, I followed up with Kim, Kim said, you know, A, B, C, D. So that would be how I would look at that. And that's what you should do with the emails moving forward. So there are a number of, uh, documents, we'll send them out tonight or tomorrow. But they're pretty straightforward on how to deal with them. The biggest issue is recusal and then be careful with the email. I think two big issues we've got going on, so.
You mentioned phone tag. Can you explain that some?
Okay, well, I, I think the idea is you're having discussions ahead of time to try to avoid having that discussion at the meeting. That's what they frown on. So you're trying to avoid having a quorum, i.e., if you don't, if there's only three of you, there's no quorum. So you put the three of you on a three-way call and say, have a whole conversation about it. And then, so you talk to, uh, Councilman Wright and Councilman Worth and get their opinion on it. And then you turn around and you hang up and then you call Councilman Hyman, Councilman Jackson and get their whole discussion about it. And then you have a third call and you call Councilman Mouse Joe, Councilman Howe. So now, now at that point in time, you've had a whole conversation, done everything. And it's a whole conversation that should have happened in public. Because you've, at that point in time, you've already, you know, you've gone, okay, they're going to vote yes, they're, you know, I, I've, and then even you start to have other conversations amongst you, you're just basically trying to avoid having the conversation in public. It's kind of what they're saying and they don't want you to do. And that's one of their concerns about the email, is if one of you responds to reply all. That in itself isn't horrible, okay, because you're just giving your one thing, you're not moving in a direction. But then the next thing you know, I get, you get an email from Councilman Worth and Councilman Jackson types in, well, I don't think this is what should happen. I think we should do this. And then we hear from the mayor and the mayor says, no, no, this is what we did. So then you have this whole conversation that should be happening here. That's why it's better to keep it, one, one council member with staff, however many staff members there are.
Um, the only other thing is the, when council needs to get something done, and I get, I get texting those in phone call all the time. But to ensure that even if it's a small request from a count, a member of council, it should be coming through the city manager, not individual, uh, departments and to remember that. Because that's, that's really important, that even if it's small, it's outside the, the rules that exist, um, in legislation.
That's, it's part of our charter, that they're direct control. Because obviously you all know you don't have any control over any employees. The council as a whole doesn't have control, individual council members have absolutely no control over anything. I mean, I think there's a logic in, can one council member tell the city manager what to do? It's questionable if they can even do that because you can only act as a whole. But it's clear that none of, the board as itself can't control employees and individuals can't even.
But vice mayor can do whatever he wants, right?
Absolutely.
So we could make, we could make a request to, to our, like, we have a, a citizen complaint or something. We could make a request to the city manager, say, can you, can, can you address this?
Absolutely. Because I think that's part of, you're not directing her to do something, you're asking the citizen. Uh, and I think that's part of what you're doing as a elected official, is you're advocating on behalf of your, uh, on behalf of your constituents.
So long as it's a request, not a directive.
I, I think, I believe that's correct. I don't think that you as yourself can give an absolute directive to city manager. But you can obviously carry that out and argue on behalf of your constituents to get that done.
We could make a request and, and our city manager could say no, so.
Which I think has occasionally happened.
Right.
So perfect example, there was a huge crater on Washington Avenue. I texted, called Mr. Worth and I said, could you please possibly look at this? That's okay.
I think you should, uh, direct that to Ms. Fell.
And I did. I, I copied her on that.
Yep. But at the same time, you're also, you're not directing him to do something, you're pointing out an issue in the city that is an emergency provision.
Looks like the chief has it, but.
I'm glad he does.
No, that's his back, he hasn't said.
If council sees a safety issue or a shitty crime, is there an issue that they call me directly so I can get over something like that?
I don't believe so.
That's fine.
I, I think that's fine on that situation, but.
And one more question. So during petitions communications and public hearings, okay, that's considered by open meetings law as, as a public comment period, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so within that period, when, when someone is coming up and speaking, okay, and they specifically ask council, you know, to answer a question. Now, their specific question may not be on the agenda. And if it, if it is on the agenda, we haven't made a motion in a second to go into discussion about it.
Right.
So are we allowed to respond to, to the, to the petitioner or the person during, the citizen during public comment?
The public comment here is your time to take a, a public comment. But your inherent issue is, is when you all start talking about the same thing, you're having discussion amongst yourselves. So the answer to that is generally speaking, no, you should, you should rephrase that.
Can I, can I also add, that's why I really, that's one of the reasons why I brought up delegations. Because if a constituent on a Monday comes in and says, I want to talk about this specific issue, because it's listed on the agenda, my understanding is you can actually dialogue with the resident because it's on the agenda. And I can, like I mentioned before, I can get that historical information, so council has that information. So yes, the public comment still exists, but if, we can encourage the staff, if you have an issue that you know is coming up, for instance, a lady with a sign, if she had called in on the Monday to Annette, and Annette has let me know, I would contact John and say, this is the issue, can you do some investigation? So on Thursday, when she comes to speak to us, council can actually give her an answer. And it's a great way for council to interact with the public and get things moving and get things done. But like you said, you can't do that in the comment section. You can only do that in the delegation because it's listed on the agenda.
And typically delegations, what we consider them as is our presentations. And that we clearly stated in the agenda, the presentation is here is, is defending. Am I correct about that?
I think that you can do whatever you want with the delegation. And I think what Manager Fell's idea is, is that she wants to have two sets of public comments, one that are in advance and the other set would just be spur of the moment. And the advanced ones are the ones that council will be able to engage with and discuss. And also ones that in many situations may be resolved by the time he even gets to council. So I think that's what the, the goal there is, is that you would put on there, on the agenda, uh, concerned citizen, you know, John Smith about the property over Hayman Highway. And then that issue can be addressed and discussed amongst council at that time.
Right. I mean, I think we should be careful about how we phrase it, you know, public comment is clearly defined, public comment in, in open meetings law. You know, and it states there that, you know, we cannot, we cannot, um, require someone to, you know, we can't require past fifteen minutes prior to a meeting for someone to sign up for public comment.
Correct.
But for a, so it could be called delegation, it could be called presentation, whatever. If that's, if that's the case, then is, I wouldn't consider it a public comment. It would be a presentation where they will be on the agenda specifically.
Yes.
Which, which would require, you know, um, which would require them, you know, it being put on the agenda forty-eight hours prior to, because it'll be a presentation.
Yeah, it has to be put on on the Monday when the agenda comes out.
I agree with that. I think the, what I would envision is that your agenda would say public comment as letter, I forget, what is it, letter C or whatever. And then letter D, we would go into those pre-planned letter comments. So D would be John Smith regarding concern about Hayman Highway. Then you have Jane Smith as E, she's concerned about, you know, the new businesses coming downtown. So the, yes, they would be on the agenda. So internally, can you call them public comment or delegate? But they're actually, they need to be on the agenda as what they are.
Okay.
Whether we do it under a subcategory of specified public, doesn't matter. But I agree with you, we cannot, that's why we'll keep the public comment for anybody who wants to sign up tonight. Can go ahead and sign up and speak tonight.
And I just have one more, I just have one more question. Can, can we, when, when, when citizens come up during public comment or petitions communications and they request that we give them an answer on things during our council comments, is that, is that proper?
I don't think it is because you're moving towards an official action on that.
Okay.
That's the issue. It's not on the agenda, it's not planned. And whatever they ask for is going to be planned for an, an additional official action moving to the forward. That's where you get the agenda problem.
Okay.
And we can look at that and be a little more clear on that as well.
So really you couldn't discuss it fully until the next meeting?
That's correct.
Or a session.
And that, again, that's the intent of the delegation is, is to move that forward. Like you, actually, we would list, like, the lady with the sign, um, whatever her name is, issue with the neighborhood sign. And then you guys can discuss it.
Yeah.
And it's just, then you're not waiting another two weeks because, like our lawyer said, you shouldn't be discussing it in the, in the comments at the end. And the, I've, I've watched, the public wants comments from you during the comment section and you guys are, you can't do that. So at least we're providing an option for the public because they want to interact with the public officials. Now we're giving them an opportunity to do that. Can we have the vice mayor adjourn? Because we're done and then everybody can.
Yeah.
We don't need to adjourn.
You can do a motion to adjourn.
Then we'll have two minutes before we have to start.
Executive decision.
I mean, you can talk to her after the meeting, like.
Yeah.